And welcome to the March 22nd, 2023 City Council Meeting. We have a full house.
Yes.
I love it. Thank y'all for being here. We will begin with the invocation from Councilman McGee, followed by the pledge. If you'll please stand.
May we bow? Our most gracious Father, we first of all come before you thanking you for this beautiful day. We thank you for all the citizens that have gathered here this morning, and we thank you for our mayor and our city council. We thank you for the city staff, and we thank you for our fire department and our police department that protects us on a daily basis. We give you all the glory and we give you all the praise, and we pray that you will bless us with wisdom and knowledge to make decisions that are beneficial to our city. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Come in.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will begin with the minutes from February the 22nd, 2023.
Move to approve.
Got a motion by Wynn, second by Curtis. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're gonna come down for a couple of awards. Y'all be ready.
Okay. We've got a great question here from the Ready to Work Program. And for y'all that don't know about this, it's a program where you keep your baby at work. And it brings happiness to the moms and others that don't know. The purpose of the program is that if you bring your baby to work, and if you go to a meeting and you can't take your baby with you, you leave your baby with somebody that's in your office. And the people that they leave your baby with, they agree to feed the baby, change the baby's diaper.
(inaudible).
But it's been a very successful program, and I hope over the years. Just thank you for doing it and for preaching. So here we have Lucas, Louder, Gary, Hampton at work, Giadis Department, inform us. The second one here is Alyssa Bigwell. Come on up here.
She's a Chinese. I can't hear you.
All right. 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 First thing on the agenda, Z1. Kyle.
Good morning, Mayor, Council.
Good morning, Kyle.
The first thing we have today is a request for a special use permit to allow for a distance, or a distance variance for a TABC, for Texas Alcohol and Beverage Commission, permit. The code requires a minimum distance of 300 feet between a place that sells alcohol and a school. And so, the applicant has requested the variance to reduce the distance from 300 feet to 290 feet as the location is within, or the property is within 290 feet of Bell Elementary, which is to the southwest of this property. This property is located along East Fifth Street, across from TJC, or Tyler Junior College. It is developed, or to the south, is developed with single-family homes. And then to the southwest is, again, Bell Elementary School. This is the proposed layout of the building, which is currently under construction, if you've been in the area. The convenience store is located at the rear of the property, or the south side of the property, with the gas station, or pumps on the north side there. Here's a picture of the area. You can see the elementary school to the southwest. There is a church across the street, across Fifth Street, which is the way the distance requirement, which is also a 300-foot distance requirement, however, is measured differently than a school. A school is from property line to property line, in a direct line, so as the crow flies. The distance requirement from a church is 300 feet, but it is from a door-to-door measurement and straight lines to the property line, along this, I'll go to it, I got a picture here. So this is how you would measure for a school, which is, this property is less than 300 feet, so it requires a variance to be able to issue an alcohol permit to sell beer and wine off-premise. If you were to measure this distance to the, from the door-to-door, like, as if it were a church, you can see it's well outside of 300 feet, it's just over 1,200 feet away as you, as somebody would walk through that area, to the door of the school. And for a church, this is how that would be measured, from the door of the business, out in a straight line, and then to the door of the church. When you do this, it's outside 300 feet, so what I'm trying to convey is that the church is not subject to the distance discrepancy, largely due to the building being set back so far away from Fifth Street. So the UDC does allow the city council to grant a variance to the distance requirement. The city has done that in the past for places to sell alcohol within 300 feet of schools. With that being evaluated, the, here are kind of the criteria for that. Generally, the code allows, or city code and also state law allows the city to, or city council to waive that requirement if they feel that it's not in the best interest of that area, or if it's not serving its intended purpose. And so, of the notices, we did receive one notice in opposition from a neighbor to the east who was concerned about the sale of alcohol next to Tyler Junior College, as well as the school. And then, we did receive a letter back from Tyler Independent School District, who was not opposed to the, not opposed to the variance, not in favor of it, but not in favor of it, but not opposed to it. They did state a concern about, you know, making sure that there's no other, you know, sale of alcohol, or e-cigarettes, or any tobacco to minors, but that's kind of the general concern that they had. This would not allow for that, because, you know, they would still have to follow the law on that. And so, with that, the Planning and Zoning Commission met earlier this month to review this request. They did recommend, they did, they voted four to zero to deny the request. Generally, they were concerned about the distance to the, you know, the church on the north side, even though it's outside of the 300 feet as we measured, it is still across the road from the church and Tyler Junior College. One thing to note is that the distance requirement from schools applies to K-312, schools not post-secondary and stuff. And so, the applicant has, the applicant wasn't in attendance at that meeting, and so they weren't able to discuss how the criteria are met in order to justify the variance. I believe there is a representative here today from the applicant to do that. And so, the applicant has appealed that request, or that denial, P and Z. And if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
All right, we do have one card for, I called them up. Anybody have any questions for Kyle?
I have one question, that 300 feet, is that set up by the city, or is it set up by TABC?
It's from the TABC.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, it's the state law. It's the minimum state requirement.
Correct.
And my question, Kyle, would be, the applicant, did they know the rules when they built the convenience store? I would have, you know, looked at the way I situated my store, or done some background work to see what variances, or what I needed to be able to sell alcohol.
Yeah, I, my understanding is, yes, they were aware of, I don't think this is the first convenience store that they built, so, but the, yeah, I think they may have been aware of that requirement. I know they did obtain a permit for the convenience store, that's separate from the permit for the review for alcohol, but generally, that, yeah, that information is conveyed whenever the question is asked, you know, can I sell alcohol from this location, that we do convey that it has to be 300 feet from all those protected uses.
You know, in all my time being on council, and now, I recall this issue coming up a number of times.
Correct.
Do you remember how many times, in general, that we've approved this? I think we've approved more than we've denied, right?
For, for, for public schools, yeah. I'm not aware of any time we've denied any request from a public school. I know we've had instances for churches, being too close to churches, and some of those have been denied over the years. Yeah, I'd say at least five instances that we've had for schools.
And some of those were restaurants, because restaurants that serve alcohol have the same TABC restrictions that convenience stores do, so, the one that comes to mind, the last one that I can think of, was the, the place across from Tyler Legacy High School, Torchies.
Torchies. There we go. Torchies, Level 33 was the most recent one, I believe. But, yes, a lot of those, if not all of them, were restaurants.
So we're talking 10 feet, right?
Yes.
And I understand Dr. Crawford's position on the e-cigarettes, and I know that he's kind of on this bandwagon of not wanting his kids at school having access to that, and I'm totally behind him 100%. But that state law, you can't buy them unless you're 21, and I don't see kids from Bell buying cigarettes, but, anyway, any other questions for Kyle before we call?
Yeah, so it's just the school that's the trigger in this case, and the ordinance tried.
Well, and then, I know it sounds like I'm for this, but, you know, if TISD or if TJC were opposed to it, really opposed to it, you'd see red on this map.
Right, right.
And we don't. Okay. We have one card here. And I'm gonna butcher this. Kyle Wajah? Come on up, please. Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
Can you come up to the microphone and just state your name and address for the record?
Yes, my name is Kavil Jit Singh.
And your address?
My address, my residence address is 1509 East Oats Road, Garland, Texas.
Would you like to just speak on behalf of your application?
Yes, sir. When we started, before starting this work, we went to city office, and we asked them that we are buying this property, and we want to build convenience store. Could you check it, please? They had everything okay, and orally, they said yes. And after constructing the building, then again, you know, when we applied for beer license, then also, one time, I went there, and I asked the gentleman who was sitting there, I don't know his name, and I asked them that I'm here for that license, and he checked it in the computer, and he said, yeah, he said everything okay, there's no problem.
Okay. Do y'all have any questions for the applicant?
No. I might have some for Kyle.
What department was he speaking about? Which department were you speaking with?
Beer license permit department.
That would be, that'd be TABC.
Here locally?
Locally, yes, ma'am. I think he's talking about the zoning office from the TABC.
Oh, okay. That's what I thought, I just wanted to make sure.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right, thank y'all for being here.
I just want to add one more thing. I'm Sirajuddin Qwaja, that's what you, I had. The thing is this, that the access, the store itself is facing on the other side of the school. There's a fence behind that, there's houses, then there's a street, and then, if somebody had to come from the school to the store, will have to go all around and then get to the school. Plus, those premises will have cameras outside to make sure everything is working fine, and this permit is off-premise, so nobody is allowed legally to drink on the premise, so there shouldn't be any issue of, like, people drinking on the premise, because they have the cameras, and they can immediately call the law enforcement agencies to come and take care of those. So I think they, they have these other locations where they know how to handle this situation.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I think y'all know the direction I'm leaning, but I'm only one guy up here.
I do have another question for Kyle.
I do, okay.
Hey, Kyle, so what is the process for this? How is it supposed to happen? If somebody's applying for this, where in the process would they find out, hey, if you're wanting to sell alcohol, you're too close to a public school?
Well, that'd be part of their due diligence, to understand that they're gonna develop the property, and knowledge of...
From whom would they find that out?
Well, this, I mean, it's in the city ordinance. If they came and talked to us, I don't know exactly what, how that happened, but we would have conveyed to them that the distance requirement is 300 feet for them, so the process for them is to...
Well, let's don't talk about them, let's talk about somebody else. If somebody else comes in to develop a piece of property, and it's a convenience store, where in the process are they, should they say, hey, we're gonna sell alcohol too? And then, is it the city that would say, well, if that's the case, you know, you...
If they, if they say they're gonna sell alcohol, then we would convey that they, they would have to meet the 300 feet requirements of schools and churches. Generally, or most of the time, that doesn't come up until they're actually submitted for an alcohol license, regardless. So we, for every, for every alcohol permit that's issued, you know, by TABC and the city, we do have to review that for the 300 feet requirement, so...
Okay.
It's just, in this case as well, you know, in other cases too, that when we do that, that check, that review, we identify that is within 300 feet. So, I would say, whenever that, you know, before that process, you know, before you get to that point, if it's, you know, somebody wants to do, to sell alcohol, and they ask about what are the requirements, that we would convey that it's a 300 feet distance requirement, but the actual review does not take place until...
The application for the license.
And so, there is, there's some responsibility on the applicant to identify that, and it seems like the distance requirement from the church, or the way they have the building set back, seems to be, to try to meet that distance requirement, but, you can't really modify the property as easily to stay away from the school.
So they have not gone through the process of presenting the 60-day notice, so that people can say they want or don't want to have that in that area, right? They're not at that level yet? You know, you have to post it for 60 days.
Yeah, that's a separate process, that's through, just through TABC. For them to get, I think, to that step, they have to have the city clerk sign off.
Have applied for the license.
Where they have to apply for it, and then have the city clerk sign off saying that...
Right.
It means that the city's distance requirements. The 60-day notice thing, again, that's a separate process, that's not through the city.
So I guess my question would be, why are they applying for that now, when they have not gotten to the point where they have applied with TABC, and done all the requirements in order to get their license after the store opens? Or gets ready to open?
Yeah, I'm not sure where they are in their process.
Heather, that things could help me some.
They have to, when they apply for the TABC permit, knowing that they have the correct zoning, and that they are able to meet our city requirements is part of the challenge. So this is...
That's the process, yeah, okay. All right.
So Kyle, can you show that diagram again that shows the distance from, so 290 feet? Any other questions for Kyle? The applicant wants to come back up and say another word.
I have one more question for Kyle. Kyle noticed that the P and Z Commission, by a four to zero vote, denied the request. Is that because the applicant did not show up, or was that because of other reasons?
The discussion, the discussion that took place was, there was questions about, you know, what about the church? What about TJC? And so, the response to that was, you know, that does not measure the same for the church. If it was a property line, property line for the church, then that would be too close as well. And if TJC was, you know, applied to that, then that'd be too close as well. I think, I don't recall that there'd be a discussion that the applicant's not here, but generally, if there's, you know, if there is concerns from the commission, and there's nobody to speak to that, then that's one outcome that may happen, is the denial. But I think, not want to speak for the planning commission, but I think generally, there was no, this, the general area was, you know, considered, all pieces were considered in this request, and there was no discussion to ask why the requirement shouldn't be applied here. Okay, thank you.
Did you want to come back up, sir? Come on up.
Thank you. 60-day notice is for the on-premise only, not for the off-premise.
I'm sorry.
The 60-day notice that you were talking about, that showed me to place in front of the store before they even decide to do that, is for the on-premise application, not for the off-premise. When somebody is consuming on-premise, then they have to put this notice for 60 days, that we are going to present, sell beer on-premise, and will allow people to come and drink inside the store, and if somebody has any objection, then it is for the on-premise, and this application is for off-premise, but it's not a requirement for the 60-day notice.
And the 300 feet is also during that process?
300 feet is the one that is the question, yes. 300 feet is for the school, yes, it is a question, but there are certain places in this town itself, that this store is just against, like, in front of them is the school entrance, and the store is, oh, they have been allowed by, I think, city or council, they have allowed them, so there is, like, a possibility of variance. In this condition, we see that it's all the way in the back, if somebody needs to come to the store, they will have to go around and come to the front, which is like, even, and the back of the school is also a playground, and the back of that store is also an empty place, where there's nothing. So there's a fence, there's a requirement from the city to the store, there are about, I think, eight or 10 feet distance to the store, and the store is facing to the other side of the school, to the park, like...
Yeah, I've seen your facility that's being built, yes. Thank you.
I appreciate it, thank you.
You're welcome. All right.
Mr. Mayor, I will say this, I've been contacted by a couple of the neighbors, and they read the results of the P and Z meeting, and they just wanted to let me know that they were not for a special use permit. I questioned them why they didn't fill out a protest card, and they didn't really have a great answer for that. They felt like one of their neighbors was their voice, but they just said, you know, if it didn't make it through planning and zoning, then why would we want to do anything else with it?
So, is that a motion?
No.
No?
The, you know, it would be interesting to hear a little bit more of the history of what we've done on this, but, you know, it's only, it's only the Bell Elementary that's in question, and I understand, we're talking about 10 feet, but, you know, the ordinance does have a number, the number's 300. So, I mean, I think that's the trigger for P and Z, that's all they need to consider, you know, whether there's a special use or a variance, that's where, you know, that's for us to decide. And I do, I do think it makes, he makes a good point, the applicant, that even though the property line is less than 300, the actual distance somebody would travel is probably gonna be down the street, much further than 300. You know, initially, before hearing, it sounds like that the history's been more to grant these special use permits, I was against this, but, you know, I would consider it as we've done on others, where it's for a period of time for review, you know, for a year, something like that, and we can see if there's any issues, instead of a, or are they always just for a period of time?
Can they do a special use permit?
Well, these, since this would be essentially a variance request, that would be indefinite. Once, once the, the variance is granted, then...
I thought it said special use permit.
To grant, yeah, to grant a variance.
Okay, I'm not aware of any that we've done.
For a variance.
Yeah, for a variance on my, my leases.
I just recall, I mean, the grocery store on 60, on 31 in the loop, they made the application to sell beer and wine inside that store, and it was too close to Jones Brashear's school. We granted that application. And Plaller, Plaller on Fifth Street, we granted that one. And I can think of, there was a restaurant down Cork, was too close to a school, we granted it. And I can think of one example after another, where we have, we've given people the right to sell beer and wine, and given them the ability to have a business model that may be better, may be worse, because of the sale of beer and wine. And personally, you know, I hate to take that, that right away because of 10 feet, when we have given people that right in the past. feet, when we have given people that right in the past. So, I, I think we, we have set a precedent of, of having some tolerance, and not just saying, we're 10 feet short, we're not giving it. But once again, I'm just one guy.
Who's this? 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 Who's this?
That's, it's in James' district.
Who's James?
Is it yours?
I'm, I'll make a motion to deny the permit, special use permit.
I'll second that.
Uh, we have a motion from Wynn, and a second from Haney, to deny, uh, Z1. Any further discussion? All those in favor of denying Z1?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
So, we got five to one to deny the permit. So, good luck with your project. All right, moving on to Z2.
This next request is a, a zone change from R1D, single-family attached, detached district to plan multi-family district. Uh, this is on Shiloh Road. Now, the applicant's requesting the, the zone change to be able to develop a multi-family development, uh, for 223 units on the property. Uh, they have prepared a site plan for this, uh, development, which I'll show in a minute. Uh, the adjacent properties to the east and southeast are zoned, uh, single-family attached and detached, uh, to the east are developed with a townhome development, and then to the south is currently undeveloped. Uh, further south is a zone UUR, developed with residential units, single-family, and then to the west is zoned for multi-family, is developed as such. Uh, the adjacent, or the, this request is assisted with the land use guide, or future land use guide identifying it as, uh, townhouses or garden apartments. Uh, the, uh, to the north, the access will be from Shiloh Road, which is, uh, on Master Street, that is a arterial street, uh, which also has commercial land uses on the north side. The, uh, the applicant, again, is requesting the development, uh, of 223 multi-family units with, with a density of, uh, 15.23 units per acre. Uh, they, they do have, uh, proposing these, these, uh, multi-family units. All the, the buildings are three stories, with the exception of the one to the southeast, uh, next to Shiloh Village, which is a two-story, uh, structure. Uh, the site plan stipulates a green belt on the south side, adjacent to the Stonegate subdivision, as well as, uh, 25-foot green belt on the east side, uh, adjacent to Shiloh Village, uh, in addition to supplemental or planting, or tree plantings to help buffer that, that development, or those two developments. Uh, the, uh, like I mentioned, the, the initial request has been modified over the past few months, uh, and the applicant has, uh, attempted to address the concerns of, of the neighbors by reducing the, the heights of the building, or the height of that, the building on the southeast, as well as provide additional buffer, uh, tree buffers and visual screening and things like that. The, uh, the notices that were received, uh, there were 12, 12 in opposition, uh, with a protest calculation of just under 18 percent. Uh, some of those were, uh, returned prior to some of the modifications of the site plan, uh, but today we haven't received any retraction of any protests, uh, as the site plan has, uh, been modified, uh, to reduce some of the, the impact. Uh, the concerns from the, the adjacent, uh, neighbors to the east and south were generally, uh, concerned about, um, stipulating, you know, green belts and buffers and things like that, but also concerned about traffic and drainage, uh, drainage was one major concern with this development. Uh, there is, there is some topography, a creek that runs, that does run through the property, that the, uh, the applicant will need to account for when they develop their, their engineering drainage plans for the site, which will come at a later phase. Uh, there is a representative for the applicant here who may be able to discuss some of that, uh, future, uh, future phases for that, and, uh, of the, I'm sorry, of the, uh, of the, the, the planning commission, uh, by a four-zero vote did recommend approval of this zone change in this site plan, uh, this zone change from R1D to PMF.
Any questions for Kyle before we call up the applicant? Uh, Adam Reeves? Come on up. Just state your name and address for the record, if you would.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. My name is Adam Reeves, 3930 Blazer Road, Collieville, Texas, 76034, with Tempest Development, representing the applicant on this project, Tavis Land Development. I'll try and be free to respect your all's time, but, um, give you a brief overview of where the project started, what we've been through on P&amp;Z, uh, the issues that Kyle highlighted, um, how we try to respond to those, uh, we under least best, uh, foot forward of what we're trying to do, and then I'm here to take questions. So, the project has gone through, uh, three P&amp;Z meetings, we've taken a couple of times. Where it started was just a, a straight request to zone to a multi-family zoning. Um, I think the major question and common concern of that was, what is this going to look like? Which has facilitated the PMF and the site plan that y'all see before you today. That was presented to the second P&amp;Z meeting, so, so some of the same comments from the original carried to that second one. Um, as Kyle mentioned, I'll, I'll break into three, the, the site plan itself, engineering, which all kind of specifies, traffic, drainage, and erosion are the big three questions in terms of that, um, and then setbacks in building heights with, with what will be there. So, the site plan, as I mentioned, just obvious pictures worth a thousand words, it's good to see what's going to come in next door to you, instead of just a blank canvas, or something that could be developed later. So, so this, this picture tells us that story. Uh, a couple of things that I would note is, is the base zoning for multi-family allows 25 units per acre. This has a 15-unit acre, so we, we directly reduce the density that this could be on straight zoning. Uh, similarly, open space is typically, I think, on this is around a two, two-and-a-half acre requirement. Um, this site plan shows over eight acres of open space, so just on a, on a normal standard, we try to reduce what, what could be allowed with this, um, planned site plan. From an engineering standpoint, I'll, I'll break those into two major levels, uh, for traffic drainage. The first being whether this was multi-family or, or built as townhome, which would be allowed right now, a lot of those concerns would exist realistically with either one of those two things that we've said from, from the neighbors, and also staff through the process that we would need to go through. So, um, from a traffic perspective, Shiloh is a, is an archer road, so the intent of that is to be a much more traveled, a much busier road. Whether it's the, the existing zoning or the current zoning, the, the traffic that our site would generate under title codes doesn't change the requirements that we would have to do down the road. So, in other words, while it's increasing in traffic, it's not, it's not doing something that gets staffed with, with normal engineering standards and current code standards, a pause, or something that we would have to do outside of the bounds of public development going forward. Um, same thing with drainage, uh, power we developed, it would need to go through that same engineering process, drainage analysis, flood study, engineering plans, and will be held both with the consultants and, and city staff, of course, to check out all those boxes, to make sure this thing is, is designed correctly, to not impact negatively either people upstream or downstream. Um, that's kind of the generic, the, the, I'll dial in a little bit on the drainage aspect, a couple of specifics were, the folks at Shiloh Village to the east worrying about flooding their homes or their property, and Stonegate to the south had mentioned some problems, where they're, they have a lake on their property, and some of the drainage from Shiloh Village just come in and apparently caused the, an issue that had to be resolved in those two years of the past few years. Um, from just a, a, a common sense standpoint, the, the Shiloh Village is, is 15 feet higher from property line to where those houses are, and to where that first apartment building would be on the southeast corner, that's, that's a 20-foot elevation differential where they're higher than us. So, so I would say, outside of the normal bounds of what we need to do from a design standpoint, we definitely don't want to flood their houses, because that means there's a big problem with the buildings that we're building today. So, so, I'm sure that that would not be the case. Um, and with the Stonegate, the, the outfall that caused some erosion issues in the area that affected their lake, that is of a different creek channel, ultimately all comes together downstream, um, a little bit to the south and the west of, of that silver piece on the west side of the site plan. But, while we get into the same drainage basic stream watch, our outfall will not be up in that area where the lake is immediately outfalling, so there should be a, there should be, have any impact or, or concern that our lake having erosion problems or any kind of interaction with what's going on there. But again, we fully realize that our staff's process is a social requirement, so we need to go there, to work with staff to meet them. I would also say, because of those three meetings and where we sit today, the staff is eyes wide open, recognizing that there's concerns from the neighbors in this area. So, our expectation of the development size is, eyes will be sharpened, attention will be sharpened as it comes to review, and will be held to, to the standard, will be, will be high, and make sure that we're not making any negative improvements. The third, um, setbacks in building height. When we originally came in, the site plan was generally like you see it today, um, what, what we had on the eastern or to the east of that southeast building was a 25-foot green belt and a 50-foot building setback to, to try and push that building at least as far as we could away from those homes, but still give us the development density and, and the site plan we wanted. After iterations with, and also the, the 50-foot setback, where that came from is, that is the setback of the homes to the east of us, that's their setback from their property line. So, we just took it as a, that it was good for them, let's mimic what they've done and start a development that's foot forward. Um, two major differences that we've changed, after hearing comments from P&amp;Z and, and the neighbors, were to extend that green belt from 25 feet to match that same 50-foot building setback, so we try and, that, that effectively means we're not going to build in that area, we're not going to drain that area, we're not going to cut down trees unless they're disused or dead, um, to help with the screening between those. Secondarily, we, we focused in there, you can see the little circles, um, at the pants evergreen screens, whether that's pine trees that, that exist immediately to the south of this area, or another large tree that will be evergreen, trying to go above and beyond with what that screening would be. Probably the, the more direct concern was, when I was written a three-story building, there's still a 20-foot elevation differential to that third story, would start being on the same elevation plane as those houses in our backyards. So, what we've done is restrict that from a three-story down to a two-story building, so that on six-foot, on second story, I'd be 16 feet or so above ground level, there's still another five feet up to where their houses are, and that's another six-foot privacy fence that they have already got on their, um, houses to begin with. So, that, that view angle should not be a concern, I'm looking in people's backyards or homes, and realistically looking up, I don't think you're going to considerably really see each other in that instance. The Stonegate portion, which is the finger to the, to the left of that page, obviously we're not developing anything there, um, the, the request that that H.O.A. group had was to allow for 100-foot setback from their property. Uh, what we took that as, so the bottom is their property, but they actually own, you can see that diagonal line coming through the bottom, they own a portion of that property for about 250 feet wide, or two Paluxi. Um, so what we did, we actually set that as our boundary, 250 foot away from their actual subdivision boundary, and then added that 500 foot on there. So, instead of the 100 they asked for, we're providing a 300-foot boundary in that area. I would say I'll speak for, for the H.O.A. president of Stonegate, if he's here, hopefully he'll correct me if I misspeak. Um, their concerns, I think, were alleviated from the last P&amp;Z, the one that we don't show on here, um, that, that I believe that would remove those objections halfway, was just a tension. My response to that was, we don't want to show something on here, this is, in a zoning case, that design analysis that needs to go into that pond, make sure it's done correctly, it's a little early for that, that sequence really comes with the full construction plan process, flood study process. So, so the intent is to do whatever we need to do on the property to make sure that there's no flooding, or that drainage is kept, um, up to the, the standards. So, um, that will be done as a function of the proper design, that's why we have it on, on the map today. I think that'll just be, once engineering happens, we'll let the engineers tell us where it's best served, if we want to put on it today, if it shifts and calls us questions. Um, but as Kyle said, we went through that process, we tried to be respectful of those concerns, um, meet, meet the bill of merit as best we could. Thankfully, P&amp;Z, I think, agreed and supported our case, staff has supported the case, so we respectfully ask that y'all approve as well, and let us move forward with our development. Have any questions?
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Reeves? Uh, this, this is the only card I have on this item, is, is Mr. Reeves. Uh, just to make sure we give everybody a choice to speak, there's, those were 12 notices in opposition. Are any of those folks here that wish to come up and speak to this item? Lloyd, come on up. Name and address for the record, please, sir.
Steve, can I speak on this? Because I had refused myself on P&amp;Z, but I, I speak.
As, as the citizen said, yes, sir, you can speak.
I was just wondering.
So...
Who are you?
Go back to the map and highlight...
What's your name and address for the record?
My name is Boyd Nichols, address 1930 Stonehill Drive, Collieville, Texas, 7573.
Thank you.
Look, the green shot. Uh, Stonegate, what we're concerned about is if you look at that outline, the top of that property, everybody knows Shiloh and the road, now you're up on the top, and you go down to the bottom of that big hill. The top of the property that we're talking about, there's a 64-foot drop between the top and the bottom of that property. With that shape there on the bottom piece, on the south end point towards Stonegate, what we need is more than the normal engineering that the city does on drainage. We need detention ponds, we need dragon teeth, we need spillways, because of the amount of water coming down, and you're taking all of that land out of that sponge soaking up water, you know, putting on concrete. If you look to the right on Shiloh Village, uh, city manager, city engineer, and us a few years back, walked it, they took Shiloh Village with traditional engineering, put a 36-inch pipe out the back, and took out 30 feet of Stonegate spillway that we had to demolish, and then rode it to the creek down there. And as most of you know, in Shiloh, on Paluxi, you follow the creek down, and you have to do a ton of work, city has spent a lot of money on where the water goes under, is it Westwood Creek, please? It goes underneath Paluxi there. So, the water, the intensity coming off this property is going to be big. We're okay with the development and everything that Adam spoke of, but we need the city to think outside the box on minimizing the flow of this water to head south of that creek with non-traditional engineering that we do here. We usually do it to our current standards, but it needs to be to the next level. That's all we want to speak to.
Dutely noted, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Nichols?
No, it's a good point.
Uh, is there anyone else here that wishes to speak on this item before we move forward? All right. Um, what is the will of the council? Any questions for anyone?
No, I mean, I think that is a good point. The, uh, of course, the, the intention is that, uh, when the required drainage and, and site work on a construction project is, is approved, that there is no downstream impact. Uh, I don't know that in reality, that's always true. Uh, so I, I think that's a good point, that, and, and it could also, it's very possible that once this goes, if this passes, and when it goes through engineering, a developer could say, that's too expensive, I'm not doing that. You know, that's, it's certainly happened before, so, um, I, I think that's, I think both individuals that spoke did a good job, so, um, based on what I heard, and, and I would emphasize that, yes, this is, this is a unusual case in that there's a, an enormous, well, there's a lot of elevation for Tyler anyway, change on this, and we do not want to negatively impact, uh, the neighbors that are already, citizens that are already in the neighborhood. But, I would move to approve Z2.
Got a motion by Curtis, second by McGee. Any further discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Good luck with your project.
Thank you, sir.
And please continue to work... And please continue to work with the Stonegate folks to make sure they don't become unhappy.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you. I'm going to say that.
All right, moving on to Z3.
I'm going to turn it over to Tharani to present the next couple items.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
Thank everyone present here today. This is a zone change request from R1A Single Family Residential District to PUR Plan Unit Residential District. This is a property that's located along South Wine Avenue. If you can look in the map, it's to the south of the intersection of Franks and Highway in Sunny Brook Drive. The applicant is requesting the zone change to allow for single-family homes. R1A is a single-family as well, but since the lots are aligned that way, they're planning to do with no access on Franks and Highway to face all of the lots on South Wine Avenue, and I'll show the site plan in a minute. The surrounding properties, the properties to the north is C2, it is undeveloped. All of the other east, west, and south is R1A, and it's mostly undeveloped and also the single-family homes. The future land use guide, since this is also going to be a single-family, it is consistent with the future land use guide. That's the area view of the property, and thus the site plan that has been submitted. It's, they're planning to build 15 homes, all facing South Wine Avenue. There's a nature trail proposed along the back of the property, and also there's going to be a common space, which is also a requirement for PUR. And thus, area view. Out of the 29 offices that was sent, none was received in favor and two in opposition to the request. Also, I would like to point out that this request will help implement adding 3,000 rooftops to the north end, and this is in the north end. Some of the concerns were traffic along South Wine in addition to what there's already in there, in the area, and also decrease in the property values. The applicant, a developer, would be required to improve their half of South Wine, and that will help alleviate some of the concerns of the neighbors. Planning a zoning commission by a 3-2 vote recommended approval of this zone change.
Any questions for Tharani?
So they will be required to bring the road up to current standards, because I know further down by there, one of the developers did curb and gutter and improve the road, so they will have to meet the same requirements.
That is correct, yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Move to approve Z3.
Second.
Motion by McGee, second by McKeller, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Z4.
This is a property that's located south of the, of the previous case that we have seen. This is also a zone change from R1A to PUR. That's the property. The applicant is requesting the zone change to develop a single-family homes as well in this area. The properties to the northeast and south are R1A, single-family homes, and also some undeveloped lots. If you look at the west, there's a railroad and also C2, that is general commercial and industrial uses along Franks and Highway. The future land use guide, it is consistent, that because it is single-family homes. That is the proposal. This is for 22 homes along South Wine Avenue. This will also have nature trails, and it also have some common space, and this will also help adding 3,000 rooftops to the north end. Out of the 29 notices that was sent, none was received in favor or in opposition to the request, and planning a joint by a 3-1 vote recommended approval.
Any questions or comments for Tharani? Move to approve Z4.
Second.
Got a motion by McGee, second by Wynn, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Tharani. Z5, Kyle.
This next item is on the southeast loop, it says zone change from office to PMX D2 to allow for a four-story hotel on this property. The current, existing properties to the north and the east are currently developed with hotels. They're open for commercial use. South is a, the office building, and then to the west is currently undeveloped, the, actually developed with multi-family homes. The, this request is consistent with the future land use guide, identified as commercial. As you can see here, the vacant property, they, they won't have direct access to the loop, it will be through that shared access easement with all those other properties. And here's the site plan, it's going to be a four-story hotel on the, on this property. The, the plan of the zoning commissioned by a 4-0 vote recommended approval.
Any questions for Kyle?
Move to approve Z5.
Second.
Motion by Curtis, second by McKeller, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Z6.
This, this is a side here, it's a zone change from multiple districts, single-family office and industrial, to PMX D1, our planned mixed-use district. This is to allow for a mixture of uses on the property to, that will serve our, for veteran communities. This is for Kent V, this is their, where they have their outreach, and then also their planned uses for activities and housing on the property, and this, this zone change will help support that, that mission. The adjacent properties to the north and east are a mixture of office and single-family districts, generally developed, again, with single-family homes and some offices across, across Chandler Highway. To the west is the elementary school, Jones Bushy Year School there. To the south is the railroad corridor. This request, again, will, will expand the mixed-use center, but it will kind of clean up that area to allow a single, you know, operation on that property as it's currently planned for. The, the proposed zoning will allow for a mixture of uses, including the expansion of the current office uses on the property to, to serve Kent V, but also recreational facilities, equine area, multifamily, well, for housing on the property, which is part of the, the Kent V's transitional housing program that they'll have there. On the south is part of the property there, but also some nature trails and things like that. There are, there is a representative for the applicant here that may be able to kind of expand on those, but generally, the, the uses are to help support their mission to serve our community's veterans. The plan to commission, well, we did receive a notice and opposition from the, I believe it was just one property owner to the east, who owns multiple properties, that they were generally just not, not aware of what was going to happen on this property, so they returned to, whatever opposition. I don't know if they were at the meeting to learn more about the, the proposal, but we haven't heard anything else from, from that neighbor. And the plan to commission by a 4-0, 4-0 vote recommended approval.
All right. I'm going to put somebody on the spot. Travis, you or Susan, can y'all come up here and just tout what y'all are doing? I'm not even giving you time to get nervous.
I'll put you on the spot, putting in your thoughts, Mr. Mayor, or something.
This is Travis from Kent V, and I'm going to let you say your name and address for the record, but I, I tell you, everything I've seen at Kent V has been phenomenal, and I told them at an event last week that I think the number of ribbon cuttings and groundbreakings that I've gone to at Kent V have now superseded anywhere else I've been in Tyler. So tell us a little bit about what y'all are doing.
Yes, sir. So first for the record, thank you for having us. My name is Travis Gladville, address is 18488 Bluebird Circle, Flint, Texas, 75762. So what we have planned here is more usage of the property that Kent V sits on. All of our lots, as you say, are basically zoned differently, and what we're wanting to do is have all have them under one specific zoning for that multi-purpose piece of property. As you can see here, we do have plans for transitional housing for our veterans. That is going to be complete with a full plan that we are in the process of developing right now, where it's not just a place to stay, but a place to grow and get that, that them back on their feet with a plan, with employment, with financial readiness. At Kent V, we always strive to cover the four pillars of wellness, that being, you know, social, mental, physical, and financial wellness. And we have done a great job since opening our doors in 2019, to the point where in 2022, we closed out the year averaging 340 veterans assisted a month. Now that we're in 2023, that number has only grown. For the past two months, we have already closed 400 veterans assisted a month. And so what this, it's also going to allow us to do is have more ribbon cuttings, and then also include a chapel and education center for veterans and their family members, along with a memorial park, and basically more parking for those ribbon cuttings. So, any questions for me?
Any questions for Travis?
I want to thank you, Travis, for the great work that you're doing over at Kent V. I'm happy to be affiliated.
There was a lot happening out there as well.
Thank you.
And I, I want to thank you for your service, and I really do want to just thank you for what you guys do for, for all the veterans. So thank you to Kent V.
Yes, sir.
I guess we need to vote on this.
Salute.
Second. Got a motion by McKeller, second by Haney, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, all right, exciting presentation. P1.
Nothing more exciting than a good drive.
Was that sarcastic yet?
Good morning, Keter.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Give I have a P1 before you. This is a request the City Council considering the presentation and approving the comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ending September 30th, 2022. We have Walter Wilhelm, his partner with Proco Wilhelm, who's here today for the presentation, and his manager, A.J. Evans, is here as well. As you all know, Proco Wilhelm conducts our audit. In my opinion, they had a great audit this year, and he's going to go through some of the details of the audit, and at the end of this presentation, we just request that you take action to approve the audit report. Having said that, I'll turn it over to Walter.
Thank you, Keter. Mayor, I heard that.
I wasn't talking about you.
Yeah, before we record, though, you never want an exciting audit. Because if you do, then that's not good. Everybody in here will be clamoring for more. So just for the record.
Okay. Please, please proceed.
Please give you the history of accounting like I didn't. Okay, no, we're, we're grateful, pleased to present the audit reports today, but before we do that, I, I do want to recognize the Finance Department for their great work, and you'll notice on the screen there or under your packet, a couple of awards. The first one is the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. This is the 36th consecutive year to receive this award, and it's given annually by the Government Finance Officers Association. The second one is the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award, 16 consecutive years, also given by the GFOA, it recognizes transparency in the budget process. The next one is the Investment Policy Certification of Distinction, 12 consecutive years, a fairly new award, and this one is given by the Government Treasurers Organization of Texas. So I'd like to give Keter, Lauren, and the rest of the Finance Department a big round Now for the good stuff. As far as our financial statements, we're just going to highlight just a few of the reports. We met at the Audit Committee last week, went over the reports in detail. First is the financial statements. Financial statements and our auditor's reports. Three reports are included in the comprehensive report. First is on the financial statements. We issued an unmodified opinion, which means the financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects. It's the highest opinion that we can give as accountants. The second one relates to our report on internal controls over financial reporting. We do not issue an opinion on your internal controls, but we did a lot of work related to those. And again, just real pleased to report, no findings related to internal controls. The city and the various departments have very strong internal controls, and real pleased to report, no recommendations related to that. Then also, another report, compliance on federal funds. This is another report where we actually issue an opinion. And we issue an opinion on whether or not the city complied with the major programs on the federal funds. The city continues to be good stewards of the federal funds, you received a lot of them the last couple of years, and again, our, our opinion is that the city complied in all material respects, because of compliance requirements of those major programs. I'm going to have A.J. Evans just review a couple of the financial highlights, and then we'll move on.
All right, thank you, Walter, and thank you to the Council and Mayor for giving us a little bit of time here, we will be quick with this. So there's a few of the highlights in the governmental funds that you'll see on the screen. Total governmental assets for the city, city, are $114 million, that's up about $50 million from the prior year. Total fund balance, which is your assets, less liabilities, related to the, to the, city are at $75 million, that's a net decrease of $3 million. Reason for that is because, okay, last year, we got all the money for the Rose Complex, this year, we spent it to start building it, and as everybody who's driven by there has seen the great progress, you know, this has been the year of that progress, and so that's the reason for that. There was a big influx of cash in the prior year related to that on the governmental side of things. So I think key number though is that the city was $1.25 billion under budget. That's for any city, the budget process is such an important control to make sure that funds are being spent properly. That's something we look at as part of the audit, and we're very pleased with all the hands that are, are part of that process and the, and the oversight as a result of the budget process. So I think seeing, you know, a million and a quarter under budget is a great number there. Enterprise funds, this is your utilities, sanitation, and the airport. Total assets were up about $48 million to a total of $426 million in enterprise fund assets, primarily related to a lot of the projects within the utilities funds. You know, there's some bonds related to that as well. And so a change in net position, again, this is money coming in versus money going out, $7.1 million increase. So a lot of utilities projects, of course, some bonds related to that, we will get all of that as well. So overall, as highlights, we wanted to say again, thank you to the Council, the Mayor, and then the Finance Department and their staff, Keter and Lauren, and the rest of the staff there, and along with the city manager's office as well. You know, couldn't do without them, sometimes it's some thankless work, and so we're very appreciative of, again, not having an exciting audit because of some of these people. So if you have any questions, that would be great for your time.
All right, thank you. Any questions for A.J. or Walter, or Keter? Well, great job. Thank you, guys.
Congratulations, Jim.
That was a presentation, but we do need to take action and approve the comprehensive annual financial report.
Move to approve P1.
Second.
Got a motion by Wynn, second by McKeller, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, guys.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
We are really excited to finally bring this back to you guys. As you know, we had a public meeting for the renovation of Pollard Park back in April of 2022, had a great turnout. We took all the concerns and the suggestions into consideration and have been working with our partners to generate an overall master plan for the park. Today, we are here to award contract to start phase one of the project, which will include two half basketball courts, a new playground, one for two to five-year-olds, and one for six to 12-year-olds, several pieces of all-inclusive playground equipment, a small dog run, a trailer connects all aspects of the park, new parking lot striping, a concrete slab for a future pavilion, and everyone's favorite, a resurfaced tennis court, and eight dedicated football courts. We already have fully renovated the restrooms there. We put the notice to bidders. We put the notice to bidders out on March 1st and March 8th, and we have a free bid meeting on March 6th, 2023. We have five contractors who submitted bids, and after reviewing the bid specs, we decided to recommend the lowest bidder. It is recommended that the City Council consider authorizing the City Manager to award bid number 23-030 for the renovation of Pollard Park, to submit builders and developers to furnish all necessary materials, equipment, superintendents, and labor in an amount not to exceed $435,000, $435,539.45.
Any questions for Leanne?
Leanne, you may want to tell them there's, because the difference in regards to what was actually recommended, that the alternate is included with this.
Okay, I'm sorry. So, if you look at, I'll go back this to the screen. Originally in your packet, I think the base bid was the only one that was being recommended. But because the bid was within budget, but it's actually lower than what we projected, we were able to add an app alternate. So, the base bid for Smith Builders and Developers was $401,539.45. With the app alternate, which is the additional pavilion slab, it's an additional $34,000, making the total $435,539.45. And we have both Hafen Associates here and Smith Builders, if anybody has any questions.
I don't have any questions, but we're very excited to get this started. I can't believe that was just April of 20, it seems like forever ago we had that meeting there. And all of it looks great, but we did find out too, on the pickleball courts, that they'll actually be able to have, was it sanctioned?
Sanctioned tournaments.
Tournaments.
Yes, that's six pickleball tournament, I mean, six pickleball courts that are to have an actual sanctioned tournament, and so we have eight.
Eight. So, we'll soon be pickleball central at Pollard Park. You've done a good job, and I move to approve M1.
Second.
Got a motion by Curtis, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. M2. This was exciting.
It's me again. With the grand opening of the new conference center quickly approaching, as many of you know, 22 days, not that I'm counting or anything, we are here to recommend an agreement for audio and visual professional services, specifically for the WT Berkshire Conference Center. The purpose of this agreement is to ensure that all of the brand-new state-of-the-art equipment at the new conference center is utilized appropriately and by experienced professionals. This will ensure that the equipment is taken care of, and those that have professional conferences or events will receive specialized specific need, specific to their needs, specialized services specific to their needs. As many may be aware, at Harvey Hall, we allowed anyone to utilize our AV equipment. And because of that, we went into a lot of issues after events with misplaced, broken, sometimes even stolen equipment. And then we have frustrated customers coming in after those events who couldn't utilize the AV equipment. So, we put out a notice to bidders on January 18th, January 25th, and February 1st of 2023, and we actually had zero bids. We then put a notice out to bidders again on March 1st and March 8th, 2023, in which we received four contractors who submitted bids. After reviewing the bid specs, we chose to go with the lowest bidder per hour. With that being said, we also would like to recommend two additional backup contractors who are trained and familiar with the system and equipment in case the primary contractor is available for any reason. Therefore, it is recommended that the City Council authorize the City Manager to award bid number 23-029 for audio and video professional services related to the WT Berkshire Conference Center to Video Magic Productions and Events LLC as the primary vendor to furnish all necessary materials, equipment, superintendents, and labor. In addition, designate NBC Productions as the secondary vendor and East Texas Productions as the tertiary. And we do have the magic in attendance. If you guys have any questions for them.
Well, I see Danny out there. From day one, staff has been aware that, that one of my biggest fears is to get the construction completed and have our first event, and none of the audiovisual works. And everybody sits in there and they go, we spent $28 million and nothing works. And so, we've talked about this for hours, the importance of having a professional, top-quality person running the show. And we've got it. So, you know, Danny and y'all, I'm so glad you got the contract. I don't know there's other people, I'm not slamming them, but I think we've got the best one that's going to run it. And I totally agree that we need somebody in there that if we have other people that come in and need audiovisual, visual stuff, they still got to work through Danny. And so, he's the go-to guy, and he's the one to make sure that it works. So, I'm thrilled with how this is turning out. I'm thrilled that the WT Berkshire Conference Center is going to have its grand opening on April the 13th from 6:30 to 8:00.
Yes, sir.
And we'd love for everybody to attend. Congratulations to you guys, but I guess we need to vote on this. Move to approve M2.
Second.
Got a motion by McGee, second by-
Best ribbon cutting this city's ever seen.
Ribbon cutting, another one. Say me in. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
Mayor, I'm sorry, you made this decade.
Wynn.
Thank you.
Sorry. I got excited.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ian. Thank you, Shepherd. M3.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Morning.
The item before you, M3, is the Southside Waste Water Treatment Plant Aeration Basin and Final Clarifier Improvements Engineering Services Agreement with KSA. So, Southside Waste Water Treatment Plant was originally constructed, it's the one down on Cumberland in 1955. The improvements in this project will include rehab of two aeration basins, rehab of two fine clarifiers, the return activated sludge pump station, digested pump sludge station, construction of an electrical building, and all of the related appropriations as according to that, and all the electrical and controls as well. So, the consultant that we've chosen on this is KSA. Their contract price for the engineering services agreement is $1,745,800. The construction length, that will take about 24 months, starting on March of next year, running until March of '26. The OBC, or the opinion of construction cost, is $10 million, about $10 million for these So, I'm here to recommend that the City Council consider authorizing the City Manager to execute a contract with KSA engineers for the Southside Waste Water Treatment Plant Aeration Basin and Fine Clarifiers Improvements Project in the amount of $1,745,800, and to approve a resolution reserving the right to reimburse expenditures with proceeds of future debt.
Any questions for Kate?
Kate, does part or all of this work increase the capacity of this facility, or is it just?
No, this is, this is pretty much standard maintenance. But what I will say is, especially in aeration basins and clarifiers, when they are not fully maintained, their capacity does get decreased.
You lose capacity.
But technically speaking, as far as performance goes, this will, we will maintain the same as outside.
Okay.
Did we get to have a ribbon cutting?
If you want a ribbon cutting, we can do a ribbon cutting.
I was hoping somebody was excited about this one, isn't there?
I'm excited about this one.
Move to approve M3.
Second.
Got a motion by Curtis, second by Wynn. Any further discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. M4, Michael.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I have a request for you today to approve a $150,000 contract to HBR to perform a railroad inventory analysis. Now, what in the world is that? So, unfortunately, whenever it comes to railroads in the general area, there's a lot of information we really just don't know about at this time. And it's very difficult to coordinate with the railroad companies. It's been one of those things that staffs have struggled with for a long period of time. And also, as far as long-range planning, it's been very difficult to get that coordination. So, this is a plan that's going to get us that first step into getting there. The first part is going to be doing an inventory, which is going to be, first of all, inventorying where the existing railroad tracks are, and also getting an understanding how often that they are running. Is it active? Is it not in use? So, we can understand what is in use, what has been abandoned. There has been discussion between the city, the county, and other cities within the MPO boundary, which includes the other cities in Smith County, Lyndale, White House. Many of them have had questions. If a portion of rail line has been abandoned, can it be acquired for reuse for city purposes? So, first of all, as far as the inventory goes, this plan will give us that data so there could be that jump and knock point so we can understand if a portion is even available for potential city acquisition. The second part of it is really getting into the analysis, which is talking about looking at all of the different crossings that are going through the entire county. So, the railroad line goes, of course, throughout cities and county, but the actual crossings where it goes past a street, typically the maintenance for that is going to be on the local municipality, whoever's going to be maintaining that. So, City of Tyler, could be Teckstock, could be the county. And whenever it comes to maintaining those crossings, there is coordination that goes along with that. But again, there's a lot of times of that, knowing what is the condition of the crossings, what's going to be the experience for the driver going across it. Also, are there other safety measures in place in each one of these crossings for other modes of transportation, bicycles, pedestrians? So, it's going to be doing an analysis of each of these crossings. So, all of the different municipalities who are part of it, who would be looking at potentially doing upgrades for crossings, going to, again, have that tab so they can know how to prioritize, what are the needs of the area. I know I saw a article through Payon TV, I believe it was just last week, saying that there was a vehicle that had some minor damage that had happened to it going over a railroad crossing here in town. So, this is one of those things that this plan could really help look at all of the conditions of that. And then recommend to the city a prioritized list, so we really wanted to know where to focus those efforts. That would be the outcome of that. And then, the third and last part of this plan would be creating essentially some standard operating procedures for the municipalities to be able to follow, that whenever we do need to coordinate, to talk to the railroad companies, to have standard operating procedures to say, who do we contact? What do we need to be asking? What are the questions we need to ask to get the best return? Because sometimes it can be a long process. So, pretty much trying to streamline all of these operations, that's the concept of the plan. So, there was a request for qualifications that was put out through the MPO that was in January of this year. We received status qualifications from five consulting firms, and after doing an analysis, a rating team looked at it, and the most qualified team was HBR Engineering, which is founded by the group that is doing the rating board. So, this, again, is going to be an MPO project, so it's actually 100% grant-funded, but as the City of Tyler serves as a fiscal agent for the MPO, that it still follows the standard financial procedures for the City of Tyler, which means that any contract exceeding $50,000 comes to the City Council for approval. So, it is recommended that the City Council authorize the contract with HBR Engineering for the railroad inventory analysis.
Will the study include how often trains run?
Yes. Yes, that is part of the inventory. And another thing that I didn't talk about is that there's also the quiet zone, there is a part of that. So, we'll actually have some GIS mapping, things like that, that would also help to really identify what are the bounds of the quiet zone, and if we wanted to extend it at any time for any reason, we could kind of have an idea of what it would take to do that.
I want to say, Michael, I am so happy to hear about this because I have so many useless railroad tracks in my district. But you said that this is grant money?
Yes, the funding for this project is going to be entirely through the MPO grant.
Okay. Excellent. I move to approve.
M4.
M4.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Got a motion by McKeller, second by Curtis. Any further discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. M5, Darian.
Good morning.
Morning.
Come up here, just, as you know, every year we have an annual SealCo program. We've gone through each year, and we create a list of streets you can see here. We also had a couple of alternates, there's plenty of labs that we were going to capitalize on. But at this time, we'll go ahead and I want to go through this pretty quick, this is an annual thing, and it's been kind of a long meeting already. So, I do want to let you just kind of, you've seen it, but I want to recap, recapitulate this, 12 and a half miles in lane miles. And construction will be between May and August of this year, that we funded out the streets, street fund, fund of 103. We did receive two bids, which is about typical nowadays, from LNS Equipment and LNS and K. We were going to, we are recommending going with the base bid of the $559,148. And 15 cents, this is based on funding, is really the essence of what this is based on. We did not go with the alternates, which were the Fox Hill and a couple of groups of streets. So, in essence, the Engineering Department requests that the City Council consider authorizing the City Manager to execute a contract with LNS Equipment Company for the construction of the 2023 SealCo program, the amount of $559,148.55.
Can you go back to that spreadsheet? You know, when we try to maintain an average of like that weighted PCI, and we try to keep around an 81, something in that neighborhood as far as keeping our streets there, and there was that one on mine that has a 92. I don't mean to put you on the spot, but how does something that has an A get on the list of, is it falling apart?
There are sections of it that are, portions of it that are, and if we do this, then we will dramatically increase the length and pull it up to 100 completely. So, it's in the area also, so it was just deemed that we can, it would be very beneficial to read this one, that's what we're going to do at this time.
Okay. Any questions for Darian?
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by McGee, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Thanks, Darian. Cassandra, B1.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Do this real quick. I'm coming to you today to request that the City Council consider making a profit to fill a vacancy on the Main Street Board. Back in 2019, when this board was created, the whole entire Executive Board members had two positions on the board, and the rest of them were five members that included downtown business, downtown business owners, property owners, and individuals who shared interest in downtown. So, Caitlin Portland is coming off the board, so they would like to request that Andy Burkefield take her spot on board for that position. So, I'm requesting.
So, Andy's the only one?
Yes.
Just one person. Well, yeah, it's, the way that the agreement works is that their chair then fills a spot. So, Caitlin comes off the chair, Andy's going on his chair. You now, as Council, have to really ratify that chair now sitting on this board.
Somebody want to make that motion?
Move to approve B1.
Second.
Got a motion by Curtis, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. All right. We're down to the consent agenda, and I believe we were going to pull one item?
Yes, I'd like to pull C89.
Okay.
And I just want to point out, I've had the privilege of working with Dr. Smith for the past five to six years, serving on the board at St. Paul, where she has been for, what, 14 to 15 years? And she's just an amazing person, and it's a privilege to now have her working with the local health authority and working with George. And so, I appreciate her stepping up to handle this position. And so, I just wanted to recognize her, thank her, and have this pulled from the consent.
George, can you come up and just do like a 30-second, if that's possible? Just a quick introduction and-
So, Dr. Smith, so the local health authorities, you're aware of the past, we had Dr. Gay Hay, and then Dr.- Gay Hay, and then Dr. Levine, who's back in the room right here. Everybody really understood the value of the whole local health authority, we've known Dr. Smith now for a number of years, and she has, recently we've worked with UT Health, and she's going to be working the rest of this there, but we're excited to have her. She has a medical degree from University of Texas Southwest Medical School. She got her residency in Little Rock, Carlsburg Children's, and she's been on a number of state committees, so she's very active. She also is an ambassador for local health, so very well-trained, very smart lady here, and we're excited to be working with her basically, and Dr. Levine is going to help her during this transition time as well. So we're pleased to make this recognition to you guys today. She was approved by the county as part of our partnership agreement. Our board approved her, and the county's approved her, and you are approving her as well. So this is the last step.
Thank you, George. Dr. Smith, you want to say just one, or not? I don't want to put you on the spot.
No, I have this opportunity to serve on the net health board for the last several years, and I'm really looking forward to serving in this capacity. It's really helping to support the wonderful work that they're already doing to help keep our community safe and healthy.
Well, I want to thank you, and Dr. Levine, and George, and Dr. Smith, you know, during all the COVID mess, and you have the EOC, and just the involvement from the professionals to give everybody guidance is essential. And so thank you, Dr. Levine, thank you, Dr. Smith, George.
Yeah, and my point out, we have our board chair, our board vice chair, Kimberly Ashley, and Allison Puller, both here today as well, so we're glad to have them here.
Well, thank you all for helping keep us safe. Thank you.
George, you forgot one word. Young.
Yeah.
I reminded him.
Isn't Lloyd Nichols one of your board members? Yeah, Lloyd, Lloyd is a board member as well, so we've got these board members.
Well, thank you to the board.
Thank you.
George, thank you, Dr. Smith. It's been an honor to work with you in the past at St. Paul, and look forward to you filling this position, and I know your passion for the community, so thank you for stepping up and doing this. And with that, I move to approve.
Two seconds. Okay, we got a motion from Haney, second by McGee. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right, we got the remainder of the consent agenda, save and accept, CA9.
Move to approve, CA1 through CA8.
Second.
Got a motion by Curtis, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. City managers report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. A few items of note. Shiloh Road is a project that we're starting to really kind of move forward on. Staff and our consultant, Happen Associates, have continued to make progress on the Shiloh Road Preliminary Engineering Report. One-on-one meetings with adjacent property owners have been conducted, and refinements to preliminary alignments and cross-sections have been discussed. We have a second, we had a second round of stakeholder meetings on March 9th, which provided updates to the property owners that were over there, as well as to get additional feedback on the project. We're taking the comments and making additional changes to the proposed alignments of Shiloh Road. Moving forward, a public meeting is tentatively scheduled for April with a goal of wrapping up the Preliminary Engineering Report in May or June. The fire department, one of the things, you know, upcoming, we have the WT Brookshire Convention Center grand opening coming up.
Conference Center.
Conference Center. I actually think it was, we were saying Conference Center, y'all told me Convention Center. I don't know. It's the CON dot center. Opening up relatively soon. But one of the things that we do as far as our partnership with Brookshires, beyond just that wonderful adventure, is our fire department works with them on their facility that they have at the loop and the Old Jacksonville Highway. And so last week, the Tyler Fire Department and Brookshires Grocery Company personnel joined forces to plan and prepare for emergencies at their main center to conduct response and exposure training over a three-day period. From this training, two exercises were planned and will be conducted later for this month, as well as training with our community partners is invaluable, as they know their facilities better than anyone else. This type of training helps our Tyler Fire Department members become familiar with the locations of hazards, layout of the property, and how to coordinate with on-scene personnel. This will ensure a safe and swift response to hazards that may arise and threaten our community at this or other facilities. Leroy is with us, and so he can come up, and I know that just as we continue with our response from the winter storms, to kind of give a brush pick-up, but we did bring back our contractors that were working with us, they had to go do other jobs, but Leroy was able to get them back on the scene, and they started up this past weekend with collections again. They have four trucks, and you can kind of correct me on this stuff, as in crews, to be able to kind of put towards it. And so do you want to talk a bit about the progress, Leroy?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning. So yes, our vendor DRC came back Monday, and as of now, we're about 80% complete, about 2,300 tickets out of the 27, and about 450 that's remaining. So we feel pretty confident, it's nice having those four trucks out there running and helping us get it all cleaned up. And this is a good example, I was out there Saturday helping them, and probably took about 15 tickets, picked up about 30 in the same area, so there's still some that don't have tickets. But we kind of got the vendors, let's clean it up, you know, so if you see it out there, just get it picked up, so we can try to get it all cleaned up.
And Mr. Mayor, Saturday, Leroy was working in the Isaiah District, and he was actually on top of the truck, running the grappling hook, coming down, getting the limbs. I made sure to move way out of the way. Thank you, Leroy.
Any other questions?
Now, I also want to say thank you, you know, the Isaiah Trails opens up at 10 o'clock Friday morning, backyard of the Parren Home, if anybody wants to go. But one of the things was, we really wanted the limbs and stuff picked up all over the city, but we wanted to also pick up in the Isaiah District, just for all the visitors that come in, have a beautiful view, so thank you for taking care of that.
And just a couple of final notes. I noticed that she avoided us today, but today is Deborah Pullman's birthday, and so she's watching on here and probably yelling at the screen for all the stuff we did wrong. Happy birthday to Deborah.
Maybe Broderick wants to sing happy birthday.
Oh.
If she was in the room.
He is a celebrity. So tell us if this happens.
And this is a-
Oh, go ahead, sir.
I'll interject one thing, because this is a good time to say this. Broderick McGee was actually, I don't know, I guess elected, voted?
Awarded. Awarded.
Awarded, that's the right word. Awarded is the gospel musician of the year.
And won't say happy birthday.
And then we also recognize Heather Nick. Today is her 19th year of working with the City of Tyler, her work anniversary, and so we are very proud of her, and for the work and just the talents and the heart she shares with our community.
All right, any other comments for the city manager before we adjourn?
I got one. Ed, we, y'all have reported to us that we've had some vandalism that's occurring, and has occurred more in some of our parks, and we've redone so many of them, and Leanne told us this morning about South Side Park getting some damage. From the city side and citizens, what can we all do to try to keep these bad actors from destroying or vandalizing our parks when we've spent so much time and effort bringing them up? I know for one hillside, the paint walls are going to be redone in the near future, so I'd hate to see those get redone and someone come through and vandalize them. So anything the city can do, citizens can do, what can we all do to protect our parks? Additional lines are always appreciated, and vigilance is always needed. And so if people do see there is some type of activity that they think is a little suspect, to please contact us through police department, and we can be able to kind of have eyes on that one. For example, though, once we do have ideas that, or know that we have parks that are kind of either being hit or being targeted, we do have surveillance that we do put up, and so, for example, for the South Side Park from last night there, that is an active case, and we do, we will, I will evaluate that, I'm trying to figure out how best to put it, because it is an active case, and we do have evidence and video and the like that we will be working on.
All right.
But anything that you may see, again, that is, you see happening in, or your neighbors see that's a little suspect in the parks, they are supposed to be closed after essentially a dark, the activity last night, heard probably around close to 9 o'clock PM. You know, do feel free to contact the police, and they can do a drive-by and just say, you know, ask why that person's there.
All right. Anything else? I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, we are adjourned.